I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. I would take the word of call, Janice Beckel.
President.
Tiffany Wells.
President.
Kelly Cooper.
President.
Joe Patrowski.
Here.
Amelie Gruber here, and I am here as well. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, we do have an adjustment tonight. We need to add a motion to nominate Trevor Campbell as a Winthrop Middle School Math Science teacher.
Okay.
If that name sounds familiar, it should.
Okay, so this is on our new business?
That's on the new business, yeah.
Okay, and can you repeat the name one more time?
Trevor.
Trevor?
No, Trevor. T R E V A.
That's what it's on us.
Right? T R E V A.
Okay.
One more time.
I just thought it was your main accent.
Well, it is, kinda. Kinda.
T R E V A.
T R E V A.
As math, as math science?
Yeah, math science.
Middle school?
Yes.
Is it for a certain amount of time or for just the school?
Yeah, I think I actually put for the, let me look at the motion again. As a one-year middle school math science teacher for F R twenty-two.
Okay. Okay.
We should put one of these.
Is that the only addition, only change, adjustment to the agenda?
Yes.
You don't know our short term? I'm talking words.
Only language, right? Okay, I will undertake a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meeting of August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as written or with corrections.
移到
Move second. Move in second and discussion. I found a few typos that I'll, I will let Colleen know about, but nothing that changes any of the meeting.
Yes.
So I want to know that. Okay, all those in favor? We'll pass it unanimously.
Those sound hard because I actually wrote those.
Oh, you did?
Those are my errors.
Okay, well, they're, they're very, very minor. Very minor.
I would still tell Colleen.
Yeah, definitely tell Colleen. They're very, yes. Okay, superintendent report.
Well, I sent mine out. It's pretty short this time because I knew I probably had a little more to add tonight, and I do. So any questions, gentlemen? I just wanted to, to share that I think the opening really, while the workshops were, I think were, were really good. This would be a real high-level advantage. I think the staff have rebounded well. Were sort of anxious, too anxious, nervous, in a positive way to start school. We get through the opening day and then the, heard the positive reports from the staff about, and the administrators from yesterday was a building-based day and they got a lot of stuff to get ready for today. Today, I, I went around, I started at the middle school, watched these students unload from the buses and come in from all directions to the walkers, the ones who were being dropped off, and so spent some time greeting them with Mrs. Pilot. And then I went over to the high school and was there when they did their all-school assembly. I went around to pretty much all the classrooms and by the time I was done, they'd called them all to the upper, uh, whatever, to the pack. And, and so I got to talk to them again. I really wasn't planning to do that, but Mr. Campbell put me on the spot, made me speak, which is very hard for me to do, so that was again. Then I came down here to the grade school and got to stand with Mrs. Randall and watch those little ones come in. It's so stinking cute to watch those kids come in. Everybody, they all have their hair put up and the boys are, guys have the unbelievable, not just guys, but the, you know, couple of boys have these really bright sneakers. It's just so cool. And then I walked around to the younger grade level and talked to a few kids in the classrooms individually. I talked primarily when I got a chance to talk to the kids, I talked about masking and why are we doing the things that we're doing. It was interesting when I was at the high school, one of the, I think it was a freshman, said to me, "I got a vaccination so I wouldn't have to wear a mask," and I'm masked as I'm saying this, my, so did I. But, you know, we have to do what we have to do. So for the most part, I said, I did not hear a single thing at the grade school from any of the kids, any of the parents that I saw out in the parking lot, or any of the parents or kids at the middle school, and just maybe a couple of comments from the, from the kids at the, at the high school, you know, a little pushback. But I think overall, and Amelie can speak to this if she wants, that the grade, the high school kids, the ones I got to speak to, it's like, you know, this year you get to go either way you want in the hallway, and I know that was a huge thing last year. And the middle school kids get to move in the hallway this year, which is huge for them, so, you know, as hard as it is and, you know, it's, it's tough. And I remember, I said to a lot of the grade school kids, I said, "How many of you like wearing masks?" And surprisingly, there were like three or four kids. "I have like six or seven different masks." And it's like, well, I really, my point was, I don't like wearing a mask any more than you like wearing a mask, but it's what we need to do to keep each other safe, and so we're gonna do it, right? And they're like, "Yeah, good." So I was like, "Who likes wearing a mask?" It's like, "Nobody's supposed to raise a mask." But they did. They're funny. Did have an issue with some mold mildew, very surprisingly, at the high school. It's been taken care of, so it really has, did not become an issue. Real kudos to George, kind of caught it quickly. A lot of it was from, as you know, we had a very humid summer. It really was focused in two classrooms, and it really was primarily from a day when the, when the roof work that was being done was, permitted the humidity to kind of come in there and create some, a great deal of trapped humidity, which quickly turned into mold and mildew, which I will say that you should, again, bang yourselves on the back because I, I had said to Joel, I said, "Check with Siemens," but I would say that, I remember reading when I was looking into research, that typically that would be a huge issue. It could shut down the school, or at least those classrooms, you know, really shut them down. But the O two prime deals with those, those issues and it really is a non-issue. Even if we'd had to close it down, it would've been really just a short time because George and Siemens, the company, came in and they, they basically cleaned it up and took care of it today. I don't know if they were, they may go, what do you plan on a couple of days before you put them back there?
I think the plan was we start that thing up on Tuesday morning.
Yep, yeah, so that's good. That'll, I mean, I think it's probably okay now, but they can, Mark was able to move the classrooms around, so that, you know, that'll be good. So real kudos to George for getting right on that and getting to take care of it. And they, and I think the diagnosis was what was really important, you know, are we gonna have an issue throughout the whole building? That, you know, for a building that young, that would be really, would've been hard to live with, so. I want you to know, one of the things we have to do is report the number of staff that are, that are vaccinated to the Department of Health and Human Services. I already created a survey yesterday. It's, it's a Google thing. It doesn't, it's Google survey. So it tallies everything for us. It doesn't, it's not identifies anybody. It's totally anonymous. And they basically had three options. They could tell us they were vaccinated, they were not vaccinated, or they didn't want to give us the information. So our hope is that we get a hundred percent of the survey back. They have till eight to get it back to us. As of today, we had ninety-four respondents, and I please report that over ninety percent of the people who responded thus far have all been vaccinated. So it's a, it's a good number. You know, my guess would be that those who haven't been vaccinated probably haven't responded yet, but that's, you know, we'll, we'll wait and see. But I still feel that we're gonna probably end up somewhere in the eighties for a percentage. Eighty percent is what, well, a hundred percent would be ideal in my mind, but eighty percent is, would be good.
Okay.
Yes.
Did we ever discuss the possibility of having those people who are not vaccinated being tested on a regular schedule?
Uh, no. And that, I will tell you, that's one of the things that is being discussed. I can say that the superintendent's organization is not thrilled with that for a lot of reasons. And, you know, I don't know, I'm not one of the, Patricia on the spot. I think there'd be some issues with the association, maybe four, I guess, I don't really know. But it's, I think there was some real reluctance at the administrative team level to start to single people out and try to, you know. One of the things we're trying to say, and actually goes back to a conversation that we had, somebody contacted you, Joe, we're not trying to politicize this. We're trying to do what we think is safest and, and best, and maybe even more than some people think that we need to do. So it's, it's not about trying to twist people's arms and such. But I also want to add to that, that I know there's ongoing conversation at the state level around this issue. So I know the governor is looking into, you know, she already did it with the healthcare workers and thinking about where she might go with that. So I think, instead of any of us trying to jump ahead and sort of set a precedent or whatever, then I think we're, we're just cognizant of the, of the reality that it's ever-changing. You want that information on the D E G H S.
So it's kind of along with that, though, those folks could be involved in a pool test?
Yeah, we'll talk about pool testing when we come to that part of the agenda, because I, I have a lot I wanted to talk to.
Oh, good. Because I was gonna ask.
Yeah. So.
Joe?
Well, I just want to follow up on it. So we all received the memo from Colleen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I almost responded, but one of my questions was, do you want the school committee to respond?
No, actually, I didn't realize it was you. I'm glad it is, just for information purposes, but no, you should not. The survey?
No, I didn't see it.
No, I didn't think I saw.
I didn't get it either.
I think, Joe, you have an inside track or something. You've got information out of people.
It must be, it must be. Well, like I said, I, I thought it was good. I thought it was appropriate.
It's very quick.
But I wasn't sure that you wanted me to respond.
No, no.
My answer could've been quite extensive.
It was a checkbox, that's it, yes. So the last thing I have under here, I'm not gonna specifically, I'll put this in a minute, somebody, is I am keeping track of the Winthrop cases, Winthrop specifically, positive cases, and I started back in July seventeenth. And we have since July eighteenth, I'm sorry, since July eighteenth, we've had fourteen additional positive cases in Winthrop, which is still a small number, comparatively speaking. And in the last week, that number has grown by four. I didn't put the totals on it, but.
So it's now eighteen?
No, 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 it's, no, it's four plus ten, yeah.
Now, I got a question about that number.
It's actually ten plus four.
Yeah. Where does that number come from?
I sent you guys the link.
The link is, it's a PDF on your thing, so you couldn't click on it. And then I thought maybe I should go through the website and see if it's a lot on that, because I did try to click on it, but it's a PDF.
Well, it's, oh, really? Well, then you can, you can type that in. The link is there. I thought it was a lot, I thought it was not.
It's all highlighted.
You can, you can type, you can put that in there and you'll get it. You gotta scroll almost all the way down to the bottom and it's a map of Maine, and it's got all the communities outlined, and you gotta, you gotta scroll down to Winthrop and then click on it, it'll tell you.
Because more than fourteen people were involved in one local business being closed.
No, but fourteen more. It's, it's grown by fourteen. I think that.
What was the timeframe for how many weeks?
Okay, let me, let me just back up, so I gave you, it sounds like I gave you confusing information. I'm, I'm looking at the growth. So I think since it began, since they started tracking, the total for Winthrop is, I'd wanna say two hundred and thirty-one.
Cumulative, yeah.
Yep, cumulative, and that's the way we keep, and that's why I have to look at it briefly, because, so then it grew by a certain number for a while, and so since I started tracking it, it's grown by fourteen. So if it was two thirty-one, sort of a whole bit of that number, then it's, it's now two forty-five, or, yeah, two forty-five. And from the last time they reported, two weeks ago, it's grown by four, and so it was two forty-one. So the total number for, for Winthrop is somewhere in the two forties. Does that make more sense?
Not all people that worked there went to Winthrop.
I understand that, but I didn't realize how serious it was until I was told and then I talked to somebody and I, it was more serious than I thought.
Well, it's still, if you look at the, the scale that they gave you to look at, it's still, comparatively, it's not a huge number.
No.
I wouldn't say it's pretty low, but it's not a huge number. And I keep looking at C Y numbers and they continue to grow, but I've realized that my data doesn't get updated every day. I think yesterday I looked at it, it was two hundred and forty-eight, and I looked it again today, it was two hundred and forty-eight, and I realized it was the same date, so I have no idea. I'm not sure it's grown on the last day, but anyway, certainly worth looking at all the time. So that's my report, except that we have two appointments. Lindsay Crook, W H S School Nutrition Worker, and Bethany Larrabee is joining, the Adult Ed Administrative, Adult Ed Administrative Assistant. And resignations, Rose Dobbin, two left, who Lindsay, Lindsay's taking her place, is the School Nutrition Worker at High School, and Janet Brunette is the Ed Tech Librarian, Ed Tech at the middle school, and she is leaving as well, or has left. And there are no retirements and no transfers to report tonight.
So first of all, I'd like to congratulate Lindsay and Bethany and wish you well in your new positions, and thank you to Rose and Janet for your service, and we wish them all the best. Just a couple of things, like you guys have probably seen this on your emails from M S M A and M S B A, that they are offering a leadership development program through the Maine Department of Education. I believe it's free, if anybody wants to sign up for that. They're looking to build leaders, so I think you can do it right from your email if that's something you're interested in. And then also, there's a Region Seven Regional School Board meeting held by Zoom on Tuesday, September seventh, from six to seven thirty, if anybody wants to attend that. I think they're gonna go over those resolutions and back to school and all that stuff, too. I just wanted to inform you about that. And that's all I have, so this is going to committee reports.
Could I just interrupt a minute?
Yeah.
Having these regional meetings was discussed at some night last year, because people will really say, "Look, I go to the meeting once a year, okay, and I look around and most of the people I don't know, and we don't really, we really haven't spent any time, which we ought to, we should." And so that was the, I think the result was they got to call this meeting. That's a good idea. It's a good idea. You have to know some of your fellow comrades out there that are involved in school business.
Yep. Thanks, Joe. Finance?
Um, I only have one new one to report on, because I just double-checked my numbers from reporting last time, and that's number twenty-six from last year, because I had already reported on the restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no, it is number twenty-six, it's on there. So we are all caught up for right now.
Awesome. Thank you. For policy, we have some policies to bring forward, or some for second reading, and just second reading.
Yes.
So we will handle that.
Sure.
Negotiations?
We'll say that I, I did whisper in the ear of someone connected that, you know, we are doing the support staff this year, and it would be like, hold it, if you weren't sooner, but later it'd be nice to have it done before we do the budget or around that time, so we can be as accurate as possible, but not pushing you through.
Anything for curriculum? She already knew I was the chief.
I was, actually, I, I thought you might have something tonight, but I'll say done, and we can talk.
We'll talk.
Okay, and I can skip over you.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just say that I'm gonna take that off a little forward unless there's objection from the board or committee, sorry.
No, I think we can put it back on if it went in the screen.
Yeah, I agree.
I think the hope was, it was, it was a great deal of, I wouldn't say a great deal, but there was certainly some optimism following the report that, you know, that the committee authorized, and I think a real hope, and for me, every time I look at that, it's like, I just, I don't want people to think that this is gonna happen soon. It's just not going to happen, so. Actually makes me feel bad every time I write it down.
Yeah.
Then I think you should take the, get rid of the ad hoc committee reports altogether and just put curriculum out of the regular reports, because my guess is, once Megan gets rolling with curriculum, she will have a report, so it should be part of the regular, even though you are not specifically, that's not a school committee, it's a school committee report, so. And it's obviously very, should be very near and dear to all of you.
Absolutely. All right, old business.
Could I just bring up something before we go to old business?
Yes, yes.
And I'm doing this primarily because it's under appointments and reservations. Did anyone read the article in the Sun Journal yesterday about what's going on at Mount Blue?
Yes. We got that, we have staffing on that, yeah, throw it real close to there.
I mean, they were talking about as high as seventy-five openings. They said they definitely hit fifty, and they're calling back people, they're trying to combine classes, but that is an incredible number. But the other thing that caught me was the comments made by the University of Maine at Farmington talking about teacher supply, what's happening at Mount Blue.
They're talking about shutting down a special ed program there. There's just nobody entering the field.
Yeah.
Well, this is a, I think it's, I think we have to be concerned, I think the unions have to be concerned, I mean, the state has to be concerned, but I now understand they're not there on school district, and bigger than us.
No, and I actually meant to mention that in my report, we are, we are getting close to, it has that math science position which she's filling, just filled tonight, and then has a librarian position, but that was a very recent resignation or last second resignation, and Mr. Campbell has one, two openings, or one in regular ed, one in special ed, now that I'm aware of, towards a teaching. How many ed techs are there, Sue?
Currently, there are two-ish. I believe we've extended an offer to a candidate for the high school resource for an ed tech position this afternoon. We just got certification, by the way.
Awesome.
I got that out of mail today. And then we have one ed tech position here at the grade school and one at the mouse school.
Scott, I might correct, there are two professional positions, the special ed.
I don't, I don't.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Was that it, Joe, did we?
Well, that's it, I just, you know, to me, that's, it's an ongoing issue, okay, but of course they talked about stealing people from each other, so I was, I was saying all the time. I said, "Well, at least they're being honest." And then I'm writing, that's a bonus, too, it's a bonus, so.
Wow.
Not as big as fifty, though.
Wow. It is. So for old business, I will undertake a motion to approve policy G C O A, staff evaluation for second reading. Remove second. Move in second and discussion.
Can I just have a little history on this in terms of who's been involved with putting this together, anything?
Yeah, Megan?
So are we, are we talking more about the handbook or the evaluation policy, because they're kind of tied together.
Yeah, I mean, tied together. I'm not criticizing them, okay?
No, no, no.
I'm impressed with the whole thing, but I just would say now, so who, who's been working on this?
Yes, so the staff evaluation was updated last winter. We actually have, when we looked more closely at the handbook, that work was done by a district-wide P P E G committee, steering committee. Part of that, the creation of that committee is that it is a legal requirement that we have a district-wide P P E G committee, and that is comprised mainly of teaching staff. So we actually have two grade school teachers, two middle school, two high school teachers. Mr. Campbell served that last year along with Ms. Randall, too, so they give that administrative, administrative perspective. We knew that the policy hadn't really been looked at in several years, and with the change in the law from probationary teachers being from three to two years, it was kind of a nice opportunity to take a look. In addition, the law also shifted to not require student learning objectives as part of the evaluation system. And so that was discussions, both of those things had to come and be discussed through the steering committee, and that kind of led us to looking at, making some larger changes. So we talked a lot, we had gathered data from a faculty survey and kind of took a look at that last fall and discussed the data, and then our teacher reps actually reached out to teachers in each of their building with some of the ideas that they had come up with in the committee. So we really tried to make it more teacher-centered. We talk all the time in education about being student-centered, and we really wanted our P P E G to reflect the needs, wants, and the growth that our teachers are seeking out in themselves and in their own practice. And so we modified it to be two teacher-chosen goals for the growth plan, and one that's gonna be a district decision that the A Team kind of collaborates on annually and makes a decision on that. And so I can share with you, we did come up with our District One is going to be using data to close the achievement gap when it comes to teacher planning. So that's one of our Marzano focuses, and we're gonna try to provide some P D this year that's gonna support teacher development in that and encourage kind of those smaller discussions, too, so it's really actionable. Pretty excited, personally, pretty excited about that one. And then, again, that, that shift from not including student data in the evaluation process meant that we now had two buckets. So we have this growth plan piece, which is really how do you want to improve your practice, get some feedback, you know, maybe take some, some risks in your classroom to really see how it can impact our students. And the other piece is your professional performance, which is how you're doing on all of those standards, the Marzano elements that we've chosen for kind of guiding our work with teachers.
And I share with the staff, and just in terms of an example, and Megan was talking about it, get them to be self-reflective and do some real challenging, to look at where they could use some support and some help and need a little growth area. And to me, it's sort of like in what they're doing in a classroom, if they, all the, all the students worked on were things that they already were good at, then they wouldn't grow. And so it's sort of the same thing, would ask the staff to take a look at things, and if they just put down things for us to, to measure them on based on what they know is really good, what they're already successful at, then they're not gonna grow. So it's, I think it's, I think we're really making great strides towards that notion of this being a improvement system and not a gotcha system, which has historically been the, the mindset in education forever, so we'll be away from that.
Any other questions or comments or thoughts? Are we ready to take a vote? All right, all those in favor? We'll pass it unanimously.
Thank you for all your work on this.
I will undertake a motion to approve policy G C, G C O A R, staff evaluation handbook for second reading. Remove second.
Can I just ask, this is an if you give me, can you change that word to procedure? G C O A dash R? All dash Rs are procedures, not policies.
Procedure.
Yep. To approve.
Procedure.
Procedure. G C O A R, staff evaluation handbook for second reading.
You go with that, Kelly?
Okay. Move in second and discussion. Megan just explained it all, so.
Yep.
Any other questions for anybody, for Megan? All right, I'll call the vote, and all those in favor? We'll pass it unanimously. Thank you to the, to your whole committee.
They worked very hard. It was really great discussions, just being part of that committee, it's been pretty cool.
Yeah, really is. Okay, I will undertake a motion to approve exhibit K F E one, building use form for second reading. Remove second. Move in second and discussion. Don't believe anything changed from last time.
No, I actually wanted to say that when Joe asked the question, this, we reviewed these when we did the first reading back in, we knew that June or May, it was a while ago, so I don't, if you have questions, it's certainly fine, because it's been, you know, you have to wait a month between first and second reading, that's like, wait three months, that's a long time.
Any questions?
No.
Joe?
I had one question, and it seems like this came up when I was on the policy committee. Hopefully, blah, blah, long time ago, but I was looking for a clarification of the group that was applying in the sense of are they a for-profit entity or a non-profit entity? Are they a local community recreational type of thing?
Like you would like to see that on the forums?
Well, I thought we used to have that on forums, too. We kept batting it around and everything, but there was a concern about for-profit entities using non-facility.
Okay, that, that would be in the policy, that's not, this is the exhibit that attached, so I have to go back and look at K F? Okay, that, that would be in the policy, that's not, this is the exhibit that attached, so I have to go back and look at KF?
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking we had it on the thing when they signed that off, okay? To get rid of any questions as to what was their background, okay?
I thought it did. It says, are you charging a fee for this event, if so, how much? I know that doesn't necessarily answer your question, but.
But it does give you an idea.
That would certainly say whether it's for profit, and the organization name is on the front. So if it was like the class of two thousand twenty-two doing it versus.
Well, I think, I think the thing is that you would expect, perhaps, that not, that for-profits would have liability insurance.
I think that mentions it here, if they don't already, and I feel like I just wrote that somewhere.
Well, I know, for instance, like, you know, the town liability coverage, which is there for winter groups, okay?
The italicized part sort of states that, if they don't have their own. Individuals representing themselves and not a group are covered under the school liability.
Yeah. I'm glad that's there, okay, I'm just.
Yeah.
And does specific groups or individuals representing a business or group must show whose liability insurance?
So I'm looking at KF right now, and it's saying, and it says categories of users in priority order, and for-profit organizations are at the bottom of the list, but they are there.
Yes.
Well, my, my question was, I thought that previously we actually had that determination as part of the application process, in other words, they would fill in and tell us, you know, are they for-profit or non-profit, or?
This says under, see under insurances on the policy, it says a certificate of insurance will be required if a fee is charged for public entertainment and the event is provided by an organization not associated with winter public schools or the town.
And we have a couple of those down, which I'm not sure where you put square dancing in, but, you know, that's been a big group using our facility for a long time. They have been a list of complaints about them using our facility.
That's not, doesn't go through adult ed?
No, I don't know where it goes through, I tell you the truth, because.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
No, but that's been, you know, a concern, because primarily, I think some are better groups than others, because they'll take care of the floors.
Right.
Make sure they're done right, cleaned up and stuff like that, and that's what we were really asking for. And I was looking into this, and I'm saying, what happened to that janitorial fee, you know, for cleanup and stuff? We were concerned about overloading our cleaning people.
That's on.
There's a mention of a fee on there, too.
Yeah, right.
Custodial health question.
Yes or no, school may require depending on the type of event. And then when you look in the actual policy, it's saying what the fee would be.
Yeah, all right, that's why.
For non-profit and for profit, it's.
In some ways, this is a good discussion for those of you who haven't been around, that, you know, we have a, a dance group which annually comes in and uses the pack, and the place is packed, 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 and it's a fabulous one and everything else, but it's obviously the place they like, because they can find a large enough place to get their audience into it. But it, it does require some attention, to make sure that they clean up, put things away, and do things right. So, and I'm not against people using any of those, so.
No, no.
I'm just concerned that we don't inherit the problem that we don't want to inherit. We do not want the janitors coming in, basically being all upset on Monday morning that their school has been disturbed and not put back the way it should be. That's not what we need, we need to make sure, so that means a janitor usually has to come in on Sunday nights to make sure that things are put back in order.
Well, it, it is, I have to go back to the policy, but one of the things that we tried to talk about was finding that balance, here's the community buildings, they belong to the community, and so we want them to be able to use them, but it should be, the basic rule should be that it should not cost the schools any additional money to maintain the buildings because they used it.
Right.
So if there's a cost to be incurred, or there are costs that will happen, they need to, to, to pay that, so we don't end up incurring additional costs. And the reality is, the safeguard that we have is, there's no guarantee that we say yes now, we'll say yes next time, if they don't, you know, if they don't conform, I guess, but I can bet you. Treat the area well with respect.
Yep. And a lot of people will, there's no question about it.
Yeah, yeah, most.
Anything else about KFE1? All right, am I, am I ready to vote? All right, I'll call the vote, all those in favor, we'll pass this one to you. Let me find where I was. It's in this packet. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve exhibit KF2, athletic facility use agreement for second reading.
KFE2, so moved.
KFE2, sorry.
Get this right.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
It does not sound like a body, a small spacing error that needs to be fixed, doesn't change anything.
Anybody?
No, but I'm really glad to see trash on there, because I know that's been a problem down on some of the fields.
Yeah.
It's nine, I know it's been there, but it's just nice to see it very explicitly on there, and.
Yeah, I believe these, these policies were basically just reformatted.
Yep, for the most part.
Okay, I will call a vote, then, all those in favor, we'll pass this one to you. Okay, next on the agenda is to revisit return to school protocol.
So I'm not even sure where to, where to go with this, as it's been throughout, first of all, I'm going to advocate we don't make any changes tonight, because we really haven't had school, you know, in session to sort of figure it out. The one thing I think has, to me, has caused the most, I don't want to say angst, but the most confusion and was sort of added to the motion at the last second is the pool testing, and I haven't really got my arms around it, I can tell you that the, that at the administrative team retreat, we were not in favor of pool testing, did not see the advantages of, of pool testing. And then, as we've asked question, and then subsequently met with the nurses, and met with the nurses, right from the very beginning with pool testing, they've not been in favor of pool testing, again, did not see the advantages. The big change that occurred, or we anticipated it occurred, didn't occur, I guess that's the way, because of where it ended up. We kind of thought that we were going to, at one point, we thought we were going to be able to allow people to test back into school. Instead of, so if you were a close contact or you were positive, well, positives is a good, but if you're a close contact, you could have a PCR test, and if you test negative, you could test back in, well, that's been taken out of our hands, that's not a possibility. So that then opened up or continued the conversation about whether pool testing made some sense, and, and all I can tell you is this, it's, it's really confusing, it's not black and white to me, I'm going to tell you that I, I suspect that if we do move forward with pool testing, and by the way, we've had, we have applied, we are approved, we're not starting yet, because there's a, there's some training that needs to happen, I think we will need to hire somebody. I don't think our nurses can do it, and, you know, the, the people who I spoke to, the summer, who were in favor of pool testing, they didn't have any negative tests, they, everybody that did it, there were, like a hundred places that did pool testing this summer. It's part of summer school and whatever, arena sports camps and such, and there was zero positive tests, so that, of course, means there's no work, there's no positive test, there's no work, it's, it's when you have a positive test that you have to do all the rapids, followed by the PCRs, and, I mean, there's just a lot to it, so we just, you know, it seems overly simplistic, the way it was sort of sold to schools, that, you know, all you do is you get people who want to do it, so volunteers, which always sounds like a good idea, and they swap themselves, and they put it in, in one container, and that container has to be packaged up and sent off, and then you get the results back in a reasonably short period of time, twenty-four to forty-eight hours, I think, is what I've been told. And if it's negative, that's it, then you wait till the next week, and so they, it's, they repeat this every week. But again, it's, it's when, when the, when there are positive tests, and then you have to identify the close contacts, and all of the information, all the tests and that has to happen, so whatever size your group is, they used to have a thirty percent, you had to have thirty percent of the population, including students and staff, who had to volunteer for it in order to be eligible for it, they've since waived that, so theoretically speaking, you could have five percent of your population that want a pool test, and they get the benefit of being, of what it means to be in the pool, and if somebody tests positive, you, your quarantine would be reduced. But then, nobody's been real clear about that, and the CDC has, has subsequently, based on some of the situations we're aware of, they've, they've still saying the same thing, that if I'm a positive and Sue is a close contact because she's next to me, and she's asymptomatic, she still has to, I have to go my ten days of quarantine, and then her ten days doesn't start until my ten days is over. That puts us right back to where we were last year, which is, so, I don't know, I don't see where we gain anything, and so I, I'm, at this point, I would say I'm, I'm, the nurses I met yesterday, they're still skeptical about the benefits of pool testing. The administrators, I haven't really polled officially, but I talked to them individually, I think they haven't changed sort of their, their thinking around it, and I'm hearing mixed reviews around the state, so I don't suggest that we change anything, I just would, would bring that up for you tonight as an area that we're going to continue to look at and see what the real benefit is for, for us. I have, the nurses asked me if I wanted to be here tonight, I said, no, I'm, I'm not going to recommend we make any decisions, decisions or changes, and so we'll talk about it some more, and if we, and if we think we want to push on the decision a little bit more, or get more information. We may not be ready to start by two weeks from now, because we have to have the training.
That's where they're back off quite a bit.
Yes, yeah. Well, they, I mean, I'll tell you.
They know, just to get even materials into schools.
Yeah, and you heard, you guys all heard me say this, they were, they, it was such a push from the DOE, beginning of summer, it was like, oh, there's a lot of flexibility, it's like, you know, you have a lot of freedom to make some decisions, then, as the summer wore on, it was really, and I shared this before, the commissioner, who I know really well, was, you just could tell from her presentation, you could tell when she's really passionate about something, and when she's just saying the pitch that she's been told to say, she did not, she did not convince me at all, and she made a couple of comments that really made me say, kind of, you're not buying this, you are not believing what you're saying, and that's just me, and, you know, it could be Jim, you're just hearing what you want to hear, I, I don't know. But particularly on pool testing, she was really warm at best, but, but, you know, started with, and I think some of you went on this, the, with Dr. Shaw. Dr. Shaw was, was a forty-five minute infomercial on pool testing or advertisement for, for whatever, and I, it's like, I left there even more confused at all, whether it makes any sense or doesn't make any sense, and I guess I have to rely heavily on, there's some conflicting information. You know, both, two of our local doctors, including Dr. Conley, who's a school physician, were here saying we should. The nurses were here not saying anything, and, and definitely not in favor of, of doing it, and I spoke, like I said, as I spoke to people in the, in the area, Marinick, it was absolutely dead set against it, to be honest with you, I can't remember what they did, they went with no masking, which is a different issue, and then they went with masking. It, it's, it's all over the map, that's why I really think, one of the things that I think Dr. Baker might have said, or might have been Dr. Conley, that I can't predict, and this is why it's really wise for us to have this one every two weeks, because two weeks from now, we could be getting completely different mandates and guidance from CDC, what, what Commissioner Megan said that I think was most telling to me was, somebody said, asked her directly what she would want to do, and she said, well, I have to, I really feel like I'm, I'm bound to follow the CDC, who I trust, they're the experts in this area, that I have to follow what they say, and our main CDC feels compelled to follow the federal CDC, which makes sense, you follow the dollars, right? And she was really not very compelling in her making us believe that what she was saying, what she did, what it felt to me she was saying is, the federal CDC is treating all CDCs, whether you're in Maine or you're in New York City, as kind of the same place, and so we all have to sort of follow the same rules, it just doesn't make sense. She didn't say that, she didn't say that, it's Jim Hodgkin's interpretation, but she clearly, clearly did say that the main CDC felt like they had no choice but to follow the federal CDC guidelines, and they are not really being given any liberty to sort of look at their state, you know, state's issues and whatever. I'm still mostly frustrated, because I, every time I have an opportunity, I bring this up, and there are, there are friends of mine who are in far more powerful positions than me as the superintendent of winter, to ask why we don't get special, any consideration, I don't want a special consideration, I want any consideration for the three-hundred-thousand-dollar-plus investment we made in the, in the research that supports that devices we put in place, the O2 Prime and the air system, which, again, as this was, I checked with them again, they're, they stand by their claim that it's ninety-nine-point-nine percent virus and bacterial free, and our classrooms and places that have it, so, you know, and, and I got myself in a little trouble when we first talked about pool testing, I said, I'm, I applaud the DOE, I applaud the CDC for looking at ways to mitigate the amount of time that should be concerned, that, you know, that kids are out with, having to be quarantined. But what about schools that have taken major, made major investments into proven devices that are, you know, providing our, our schools with some safety, why don't we get some special? Why don't we just get some consideration? The best I've been so far is, well, that's a really good idea to do that, and that made me feel very good, so. I, I just, there's really nothing that I have, that I want, I just want, I guess, plant that seed that we're not convinced that pool testing is worth. All the, we may, what Dick came up is, and I think you might have mentioned this, Jan, I mean, but it doesn't matter, the, we might want to pool test specific groups, for instance, we want, might want to pool test athletes, teams, whatever, but again, we're not going to, we're, it's all, it has to be a voluntary program, so we can't make them do it. But there's so many contradictions, I don't even want to get into the contradictions.
Yeah, my comment is concerning, going back into quarantine, to the W quarantine, that's my concern.
Well, the good thing is, Tim, I'm, I'm with you, and I'm with all of you, except that I think one of the things that we've done, and all, this is actually kudos to the, to the building level administrators, we're doing a lot more assigned seating stuff, which sounds like a pain in the butt, but it's ultimately what it does is that, you know, last, and you, you were a victim of this a couple times last year, one was in a community, which we had zero control over, but here in school, we essentially can limit the number of kids who might have to be close contact because we're, because we, we know where they are, so if, if they are one and six feet apart, and they're primarily mass, which they are, then they, they're not close contact, they're outside of that, that area. I don't want it to, that, that's not what I want, but, so.
I just think, this, if we go, especially the meeting we had a couple weeks ago here, if we want to talk about the possibility of pool testing, or have that discussion, if we're going to do it or not do it, we've got to put that out there again, that we're going to have that discussion, I think if we did take it on, if we had that discussion here, that, about it, in our continuum, without really publicizing it, we could get some backlash for that.
Well, you think there's a lot of support for pool testing?
I don't.
I don't know, I, I think there's a core of people that would have that.
Well, I hope they understand it better than we do, or I do, it's sad, because I don't know why, and it feels like one of those things where they've been, from my perspective, been sold with all the goods, and.
I, I personally am not a member of the law, but I'm just saying, I just think we should just keep them.
So, kind of related to that, and this may not be where you're going, I've, I've got a little, I thought we, I was sort of waiting, I talked to Sue last week about maybe doing something like a, a community forum or something like that, but I wanted to see, well, first of all, I'm going to talk to all of you, but then, secondly, I wanted to see what kind of additional feedback you guys were getting, you know, about these decisions and, and, you know, whether remote testing, five days a week, pool testing, masking, all those things that were out there, and get so very little, it's like, I don't know that we want to, what I heard a little bit from, and I know I get quite a bit from Joe, is this whole sense of what we need to. Uh but what I heard a little bit from, and I know I get quite a bit from Joe, is this whole sense of what we need to let people know, we need to let people know what. I I I and I don't, I'm not saying we shouldn't. You never can communicate too much. I totally get that. But at the same time, I don't know how much we want to respond to um the realities is we're we're. I think the decisions we made, we can we can look at statistically. We are easily ninety percent or better correct in terms of the decisions that we made uh based upon the the information that we got last year, you know, or even even knowing this. It's not a specific survey or anything like that. But last year, we had eighty percent of our students in school eighty percent of the time. So eighty percent of the parents sent their their students here. So they clearly wanted to. What we've heard most as as the year was ending is three things. From the parents, we're hearing five days, you know, we we understand the situation. Our our community has been amazingly supportive in terms of supporting us, um not going to school on Wednesdays for the for the entire year. Um and uh so that's the big one. That's the big, big one. The second one was um at the middle school and the high school with the, you know, in middle school, the teachers didn't want to have to not have a home base. They were traveling. The kids stayed in one room and and the teachers traveled. That was not popular right from the very beginning. And at the high school, they were all traveling. And that's one of the things I said today when I said, you know, at least we can tell you that you have the opportunity to, you know, be in the hallway and and go either way, anywhere you want to go. And I'll tell you, after just one year, and I'm not there that much, it was really weird to see people coming at you the wrong way. It wasn't the wrong way, though. Uh so, you know, I I just, I I'm not saying we should that we shouldn't address the issue, but I figured out how we address the issue. Because we had twenty percent of the people who chose remote or homeschooling last year. So um this year, of that twenty percent that were revoked last year, at least half, more like seventy-five percent of them have, let's just say half. So half of the twenty percent are back in our schools, five days a week. That's ninety percent of our population. That's ninety percent of our of our students. Um to me, that that makes makes sense. We take, we stay with that. Where we are to say, we're much closer to getting to where we need to, which is prior to COVID, we we always had two options for our families um in terms of their Shaw's education, in school, homeschool. Uh and and Winthrop, while I haven't been here during the year, but my understanding is Winthrop is no different than any other place where I've been and whatever role I've been, that we will support our homeschool students um in terms of providing uh materials and um taking some, a number of our homeschool kids already come in for part of part of the day. Those we'll do whatever we can. But I it just didn't make any sense for us. And then I went through two weeks ago, why why we we just, from a financial standpoint, doing remote made no sense. Um so I guess it's a long-winded answer, Tim, to say, I'm not opposed to putting that information out there. But um we get took a little bit of um a little bit of crap, primarily Joe, um for.
I think people are confused because, you know, there's there's different sides here, but the people that are so anti-mask, they do not, I think they do not understand that your child's not going to be in school if we take the mask off. And they're so stuck on that.
Yeah.
Um they don't understand the, when we voted no mask, um that if we did no mask, I mean, let's start over. If we voted no mask, the kids are in school, they're going to be quarantined, aren't they?
Right. They don't understand.
They understand. They're just so focused on mask, mask, mask. And then they're stuck. But they don't think they under- they understood that rule. And I didn't understand it almost until two or two days before the meeting.
Right.
Uh and it's really, it's crazy for any school to go in mask right now.
Yeah.
And we just be harmful on kids, no matter what you believe.
Yeah. Because we can't do that test back in like we thought, that changed everything.
Whole classroom could be out, boom, 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 all the time.
Yeah. And now we've mitigated that. That's sure non-hack.
I everybody's like, I guess, no, this is the way this is the way it is.
Yeah.
Um this is what's going on. They think they're they're understanding. I mean, I can't even talk to everybody, but.
Yeah.
A small circle.
I I totally agree with you.
Do you know, and I try, I've asked my nurses, checking in in my district too. Everything that I seem to read is that if teachers are vaccinated or adults are vaccinated and there's and they're close contact, they don't have to quarantine. Is that true for students as well?
I believe it is.
Okay, because I can't legit find that anywhere in the in the literature. It just says adults who are. So I'm like, I hope that's the same for kids too.
I believe it is.
And I know that doesn't affect grade school kid-wise because they can't.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
But it certainly would affect middle school and high school if their students are vaccinated.
Yeah.
And then my other question in my district, and I don't know if Winthrop is doing this too, or if it's like a statewide sort of policy. Um if we are unvaccinated as a staff, as a person, and we are COVID or not COVID, if we are close contact and have to be out, we cannot use our sick time?
Um that was a new piece of legislation that passed a couple of months ago.
Okay.
We have to, and actually just met with Teresa in March about that today, that if we, and we did, we were pretty generous, I think, last year. Uh there were some, there was maybe been some days where staff who had children who had to quarantine used used um time. And we'd be able to some days then, the legislation says that those days, they need to rest those days back and be given it. And this year, moving forward, in many of those circumstances, if related to COVID, it doesn't count against certain related sick leave.
I would say from that, those exceptions for quarantine, um it only distinguishes between staff and students. Um is it the mask being on? Right here, I would assume that all the other ones need to provoke. And that that's how I read that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Tim, I I just want to ask a side question of this. What about enrollment? When we were here a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about having X number of more kids registering to come to school under the thing.
Yeah.
If if you had not read the manual dealing with today, Caribou has gotten like a hundred more kids than expected. Of course, people that moved in, up there, get away with everything. And it was like, what happened to us?
We have, we have in the last month, uh Winthrop grade schools picked up seventy more students, seventy. Caribou is a lot bigger throughout the K through eight system, yeah. And primarily, hard hit was grade three.
It's in high school.
Great, yeah, that weird.
Our grade three is like blowing up at our school, yeah.
Yeah. We just had, I had the fact, I usually pretty um pretty open to accepting superintendent agreements for, you know, for legitimate reasons. And and so I just said, if you were careful. We had a seventh grader that came in today um that that we approved. And we had a first and fourth grader. And I had to double check with Jolene to say, whoever, where are these guys? Um and, you know, so, yeah, we're, I would say, I can't wait for our October first enrollment. We anticipated because we were going to get tho- those um, but I say seventy, that's not, those are new students. Those are not, if you add in the remote students, yeah, if you look at the remote students, it fifty percent of the twenty percent is coming back. Um and this is on top of all those students. So I'm going to guess that we will get, um we will probably get easily ninety more uh for new students for for Winthrop this year. Now, this is not the way you guys should be looking at it, being kind of half those representative community. Um that will uh that will have dramatic impact on our um funding this year. At roughly eight thousand dollars a student, that's a lot, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
But we don't get it this year, but next year.
No, you will, tech, uh we don't get it this year, right. We don't get FY twenty-two.
Right.
But we'll get the funding for FY twenty-three, just the the October first enrollment will impact that. So.
I have another question about the pool testing.
I don't have, go ahead, and and I need to to shut the conversation up. I just, I'm not, because I wasn't making any recommendations, but just.
Right. It's just, just a point that I just wanted, I was just reminded me when I was looking at this. So if you have teachers who are not vaccinated, even with the universal masking policy, they will have to be. If they're close contact, they would still have to quarantine. The students don't, but the teachers do. So I'm just thinking, I know it's kind of crazy, um but that could impact, I just think about substitute teachers.
Stuff like that.
So I just wanted to, even if maybe we decide we just want to do certain groups, we might want to consider the teachers as one of those.
Well, they are. I mean, they already know that, that the the message is out there that the pool testing is open to anybody, staff or students. Uh so.
And pardon me, Phil, and I know that makes, and we don't even know what it's going to look like because it's not here. But if it's a volunteer, sorry, if it's a voluntary thing, then those who want to voluntary, do it, do it. Those who don't, don't, yes, you don't.
I feel a little, I feel a little more, um I guess I'm a little more comfortable doing that because of those reasons. And um I was actually, I don't know what my initial feeling was, but when Melissa Eador first said that the thirty percent rule is out, and I verified that, not that I didn't trust her.
Right.
She's always very um accurate. But, you know, it really does exactly come down to that.
Yes.
We have ten percent of any population at any of the three locations, then that's your pool.
Yeah.
You know, so.
I guess the one benefit to pool testing, even if it's not, you can test back in, um is that we would know early if there were other kids that needed to be infected.
I will tell you that we have four um positive tests here at the grade school already. Students, they did obviously not school spread, um chemically asymptomatic and then sent home. So, um so it it's a.
Well, they were sent to school. They actually can't.
So we need to remind families.
Okay, again, we'll do that.
Their kids home. I know first day is exciting and important, but community health is so much more.
One little guy was there, he got sent home very early. And I was out there when he left and was leaving. And and I said, you're not feeling it? He's like, no, he's got two symptoms, he's whatever. And he was really, really downtrodden. He was like, I don't want to go home, please. Exactly what you're talking about, Tim, so, yeah. And I was one of our bigger kids, so she's our fourth and fifth grade, and I'm like, it's like, well, I'm these guys. So I don't, I don't, I don't have any recommendations. I I think at first I thought we were a little crazy to do it every two weeks, but I think we were wise. Can't look at the seven two weeks.
My only.
Do you want me to ask the nurses to be here next time? That's a little.
Sure. Yeah. It it directly impacts them, so they might want to have a stay.
I think it's not bad, particularly with Dr. Baker, have her at least send us a report of what's happening in the community because yeah, she's seeing it for some, she's looking at it for that.
So, on the flip side of all of this, if if we ever get back to normal, it seems to me like it would be wise to know when do we stop doing this? Do we, is it too early to go there? Is it, I feel like we need a plan as far as, okay, when we get to this point, we can look at relaxing things.
I think having benchmarks available to us is a great idea. And maybe, you know, when you're doing any kind of planning or strategic or otherwise, it doesn't make sense to be like, well, it feels good, let's do it now.
Exactly.
But it makes a lot more sense to have that upfront. This is when we'll make this change. This is when we'll make.
And I think that about the community too.
Yeah, it 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 probably will. The um, I think the issue, and I I think it first came up with Amelia that was here two, couple, two, three meetings ago. Um that question is repeatedly being asked on the uh we meet, still meet weekly with the commissioner, although I didn't believe this week.
It's good to know that's coming up, yeah.
The people are still talking about that because I think it doesn't make sense for Winthrop to, I mean, I guess we could, if we wanted to set our own benchmarks, but it needs to be based on what?
CDC. I mean, until the CDC says we can relax it, I don't think we can.
Well, I'm not even talking about that. No, I I agree with both of you. You've been saying this for a long time, Sue. Um but I I think they ought to, and that's kind of what Amelia was talking about. We we should, we should be looking at, um and so this came up with the nurses, let's start with pool testing. We say we put fully implement pool, pool testing, and it's a sizable, you know, pool, it's a thirty percent pool. And we go four months, never having a positive test. You know, I I think it's those types of questions that are being asked in terms of what is, what's it going to take to sort of say, um we can, we can mask less. Um, you know, for me personally, it's going to take something really dramatic to to go away from. Well, it's still a federal mandate for the buses, so that's a no-brainer. We're kind of, um, that's, that's no choice. Um the hallway type thing, getting off the buses, whatever, to me, that it makes, I can't see that going away for a length of time. Um.
Quarantine, I mean, quarantine most happens.
Yeah, the whole, the whole, I don't know what happened. I want to ask, I'm going to ask the question again about why did we um and I know that Melissa and Jeannie did ask Emily Polan, but poor Emily Polan is like a, you know, she's she's the the state person who's in charge of all this, and she's one person. Um and but asking about the whole thing about why didn't we, why didn't we move forward with the um the test backend, that's that's the biggest thing for me. I I get all this stuff, and I I understand all the precautions and but I've never understood the ten days and then ten days, and yours doesn't start till theirs ends. And uh that that doesn't make any sense to me. So those are the types of things I like to see some relaxation on. Uh but, you know, I I don't see it, see that happening for a while. People are, you know, I thought Dr. McConnell was spot on the other day when she was talking about this. This is so rapidly changing. And and while um the this variant, the Delta variant is is so much more aggressive and can infect so many more people, it's also quicker.
Well, and it's it's impacting children more than the prior variants were.
Yeah.
And that's scary for being in a school today.
Yep, yep. So I'm more confident than than I probably should be with respect to the things that the decisions that you guys have made and we put in place with the with the systems. But as I said, I'm I'm very, I'm very confident with our kids in our classrooms. Um I'm not confident with our kids in our um
Hallways.
Hallways. I'm not even as confident with our kids in our cafeterias, even though that's, those are, those are covered. And the grade school, and and part partly because of just the way they they interact. But so that's why nobody asked about the setup here.
Well, I was going to ask that after the meeting, but.
Grade two is um is eating down, I think, is grade two?
Yeah.
If grade two is eating lunch, I'm here, all of them are some of them.
Oh.
All of them, yeah. So these desks, when they're properly um put up, we push them back for the desk. Um they're all six foot spaced. Grade school's doing six foot spacing. And both the high school and the middle school are doing three foot spacing with um that's about assigned seating. So, you know, it's uh, and again, that's part of, we're talking about places where we're just not being, not us, anybody, but just not being consistent. I still don't want to talk about sports because it just doesn't make any sense to me, but I, you know.
Well, I think I think we struggled with that a little bit at the last meeting, right? How do you deal with inconsistencies? Yes, a significant number of the high school students have been vaccinated.
That's one.
But whose job is it to make sure that people who are vaccinated, that people who aren't vaccinated are masked, right? So you have to make that one overarching, even though, you're right, I got vaccinated, why am I having to wear this mask? I don't want it anymore, right? But how do you keep the unvaccinated and the potentially ill confirmed?
I have to, I could be wrong. This is just my, and and Mark or Sue or Teresa from the grade school, you can correct me if you think I'm wrong. And Megan, you get a district perspective too. I think the issue of masking is is not so much a student issue. Like our students, I mean, there are some, I know that that some, um it's an issue, but for the most part, especially our youngers. And I and I, and you say, what do you know? Well, you know, one of my, Miss Tess, is my four-year-old grandson. He's ready to go to school. He has no issue with the fact that he has to have a mask on. And he wears it all the time. He's just so excited about being in school and, you know, those uh, and like I said today, those those kids raised a hand, yeah, I like wearing a mask. I have several different masks, and they're so cool. They love those. There are there are those people.
And if you compare to last year, my fifth grader had said so much, I would be willing to do anything to be in school. Whatever you even did, yeah, I would do it.
Yeah.
Which is totally different than normal.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sick today. I don't want to go.
So I don't, I'm not making, I don't think we should make any changes. I think we should revisit. I'll ask the nurses to be here. Um we can have a deeper conversation. Maybe I'll ask Dr. McConnell to come back as well as our school physician.
You can keep us posted as to what's being discussed at the higher levels as far as those benchmarks.
Yeah.
Because I'm going to keep asking.
Well, and I get, I think a lot of that from the community too. When would you make that change? When would you stop requiring masks? Well, I don't, we don't have that answer yet. It's a little too early for that. But the other thing too is if you make that decision now, then things change. And people have that decision in the head. You said, it's hard. It's hard to, personally.
I think, like everyone said, um, I think the students are willing to do a lot to be back in school, and the high schoolers, honestly, surprising to me, are very good about it, but I honestly, I don't think that uh, differentiating between vaccinated and unvaccinated students is ever something that we can do.
I totally agree. No.
Yeah, it does.
No.
Yeah, I think that would cause a lot more issues than saying everyone has to mask.
Yes.
So, I know today was just the first day, but it's, and, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Kepel, you certainly can correct me, but it seemed to me, not that there were many big issues, um, but it seemed that the, if you take the, the number of issues, they were really focused on the freshman class. Is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah. Not major, I'm not saying, I don't wanna blow it out of proportion, but I'm just thinking that's gonna be a little helpful, you know? Outstanding, responsible young lady like yourself would be really, would go along with it.
I think the, yeah, the sophomores, juniors, and seniors, um, I mean, we've seen the changes from last year to this year, and the masking changes and the spacing changes have been, like, huge in a very positive way. I mean, the, we were seated so far apart and so far away from the teachers, and even, like, today, just being a little bit closer and being able to sit at the same table as a friend, and being closer to the teacher, and being able to see the teacher's face every once in a while was a huge difference, and it's really, really nice.
Yep.
Thank you for sharing that, that's really awesome.
So what are we gonna do about sports games?
We don't do anything about the sports games, do we?
Freaking, no, that's the thing, I, I don't.
Well, oh, oh, wait, wait, that's not quite true, okay, because.
No, you're right, it's not.
Joel was, was great, uh, I did talk to Joel about watching buses go through Winthrop, okay, where the kids were unmasked and just, you know, flung all together in the back and stuff like that, and, uh, Joel has assured me that that's not gonna be the case with our kids traveling, that they're gonna do, because the, the federal law does not stop at the end of school, it includes if you ride on that bus.
Yep.
Then there's part of the whole issue, and I was just glad to see it. But then on the other hand, we had a fantastic crowd the other night for our preseason game. Go ahead. I don't really want a fantastic crowd over here because there were very few masks, very few masks. There were kids all over each other, um, the question, of course, becomes on the teams, that the teams, there were a couple of players on, on Winthrop's team who were masked, but basically that was about it. The other side didn't have a mask at all. I guess my worry, besides the fact that we need some goats and llamas to kill the vegetation that is growing up, even up at the high school, and stuff like that, if anybody's got any, can you bring them in? We will need them for a while, but. And, and, and Joel's very serious about that, he knows that that's the solution to this, like, is to get to the vineyards. And, uh, but my, my thing is that, is there anything we should be doing regarding the games coming up, and don't we have a game Friday night?
We do.
Yeah. So, I'd like to be there, uh, but, but I'm just worried about the community, and, uh.
Right, right now the CDC hasn't changed their outside gatherings, it's still.
It's optional, so if people are, if people are uncomfortable, they definitely can wear masks. I mean, it's not like you can't wear a mask.
So I, I, I know where you're going with it, I mean, we could theoretically make, make those decisions, but we would be, we would be tarred and feathered, and.
No, you wouldn't be, it wouldn't be my fault.
So, but, so if the outside events don't need to be masked, what will we do when it comes to basketball?
Let's wait until basketball season.
Yeah, we've got three months.
It's a week could change so much.
Right now and then.
Yep.
Yeah.
So how many weeks before basketball season should we bring this up again?
Well, every two weeks, it's on the agenda, I mean.
True, that's true, yeah, every meeting it's up.
Okay.
And, and you know, um, both, both, all three of our gyms are protected by those devices, so it, really, there's many pieces to that. Like, are we gonna get the proper consideration for the investments that we've made? That's one thing. Secondly, you know, what's the, you know, the, uh, what's the status of the most recent variant? I mean, I don't think the, the Delta variant is the end of the variant. You know, it's gonna be whatever's next.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be surprised if MPA comes out with recommendations before the, because they need, anyways, and they, they have different recommendations.
I don't think so. They, uh, yeah, it's been very frustrating, that's why I think.
Yeah.
You guys wanna talk about it, go ahead, I'm very frustrated.
Well, you know, my, my, my thing is not to say we have a negative decision, my thing is to just keep it in the forefront that we're talking about these things.
How inconsistent it is?
Well, we may, we may come up with something, or we may, you may bring this up in your meetings with your superintendents and the commissioner or something like that, and we'll find out that, yeah, there are others who are working on this and are concerned. My, my thing is just concern of the community and people, you know, coming to a game like this, I don't want them to get sick.
Yeah, really.
And that, that's the main thing, and, uh, but I don't know what you can really do, I really don't know. I do think that ticket sellers should wear masks, I'm just thinking about that, too. You're listening?
I'm not. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I can see where you're coming from there, because they are, you know, face to face with every person who walks in the building. But, I mean, I guess that's it, right? It's in the building where you're in close contact, but when you're.
Well, I, I was actually thinking outside, too.
It's outside.
If the breeze, you know, if, you know, how big of a concern is it really outside? I mean, it seems to be that the science is saying it's not a same concern at all, as it would be inside.
Correct.
It's like that fifteen minute, if you're with someone for more, but outside, that's not a good thing anymore.
Right.
Right.
And, and again, that's one of those things that changed and changed overnight. It used to be fifteen minutes at a time, and it's fifteen minutes cumulative.
Yeah.
Which is where it is right now, so, yeah, it's, and it has not, you're right, because outside, it's, it's a zero issue, so.
So I think for the fall sports, we're, I think we're okay.
So, so that's interesting, Joel, because I'm doing the down markers, so I'm gonna be kind, you know, it's, I don't, I don't know. I have to talk to my colleagues, I don't know, but I always, um, I always say, I don't have it right now. I usually have my mask in my back pocket, but when I came in from, it's getting around, I didn't bring it with me, but, and I had no issue, you know, I didn't have it right now.
Anything else anybody wants to bring up to, to kind of just keep talking about that we haven't covered? All right, move on to new business. I will entertain a motion to nominate Erin.
Storps.
Storps as a one-year kindergarten teacher for pre-school year twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Again, I'm, I'm sorry to, um, I, I didn't pick this up until later, it's actually, you're not nominated, you're elected.
True, okay, and.
I nominate you elect.
Yep.
Are you sure?
All right.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Anything? Anybody? Okay. So we'll call a vote? Is that a yes, or is, okay. I do know I was gonna say, all the halls in favor. Oh, my dear. My predictable. Okay, congratulations to Erin. What's that?
You did it.
Yes. Okay, I will vote pass unanimously, I don't know if I said that out loud, I thought it. Um, I will entertain a motion, uh, to elect Jennifer McConnell as a district physician.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion?
Uh, thoroughly discussion, I just should know, when I, um, asked, calling you with this on, she said the school committee hasn't done that in the past, um, but that's required.
Yeah, I feel like it's done.
I feel like we did that last year.
I was just gonna say, we haven't done it.
We pay our, I mean, I know it's very measly type and, and, but, yeah, I mean.
I'm pretty sure we did that last year.
Well, I think some, uh, my guess would be that it may have been considered an appointment, which is usually.
Oh, that could have been, yeah.
Um, but it really, the, the law, school law does say that school committees are supposed to elect their school physician.
Have we elected a school physician?
Schools are required to have a school physician.
I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't like it or not, I don't like it, school physicians.
Good, if you, I just wanted to clarify, whatever.
Any other thoughts, questions for us? All right, I'll call the vote, all votes in favor? Vote passes again, Miss Lemon. Would you like me to do shrubber next, or do you want me to do it after?
I put it after, so you can, but, so I would do, um, do that.
I will entertain a motion to approve the MSBA proposed resolutions for consideration at the MSBA delegate assembly on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion?
I would say that approve for consideration is okay, but I wouldn't take a position, which is what we usually do before we, we go to the annual meeting. I'm especially looking forward to the, uh, a meeting that's being called for the whole region.
Okay.
They will discuss these at that particular point.
Okay.
And there can also be other changes to this, as we found going along, you know, that, uh, there are other groups out there who are much more expert than we are on these things, you know? They open up with other ideas, and we'll hear about amendments, or we could hear about amendments before we do that.
I, I find it a little interesting to, well, then the student absentee thing, um, I know that's a big issue in a lot of schools, but I feel like it's just like the hamster going through the wheel and nothing happens. And even with DHHS sometimes, I mean, a truancy with a child doesn't seem to be as big as some other issues, and maybe it isn't, but it's very difficult to get any help with kids being truant, or, or missing that ten percent, which labels them chronically absent, so what? There's, I just, I have a hard time when a, when a child misses, you know, thirty percent of this year, thirty percent of that year, thirty percent of that year, and they still get pushed through the system because we can't retain a child. You know, they're missing, like, after three years of, of school, they've missed an entire year. That doesn't mean academically, they might not be meeting those standards, but a lot of them aren't, but we still, I just think that something needs to be done more about, about truancy. I don't know what that is as a teacher, I don't know what that is as a school board member, but it's, it's getting bad.
It's, I think it's been bad for a long time.
Yeah.
I can tell you when I was serving on the State Truancy Drop Out Prevention Committee, we introduced some legislation to, to try to put some teeth in that law, it got, it got shut down.
There, that's, there's no teeth at all.
Yeah.
And it's, it's awful for the kids, it's awful for, you know, so.
It was a really awesome committee we put together, it was a bipartisan, um, Senator Alfon was, you know, was in the, at the time, and he was on the committee, and um, just, it was a really good committee, and I was like, man, if this group of people can't push something through, it would make people understand what you're just saying. And, you know, I mean, I, this is not how I feel, so don't, the fact I'm saying it, don't think it's how I feel, but I think their, their sense is, we have a mandated school attendance, or, uh, God, I forget what I ordered now, but kids have to be in school, um, and that's, that's the requirement, and there's too many people who just look at it as that's their opportunity, and if they choose not to come to school, that's an opportunity wasted, it's like, ah. And, and they're like, well, you know, you can make them, it's that old lead fish, uh, fish, yeah, you can leave the fish to water, that's fine.
We're gonna go for it.
Yeah, they're gonna like it. Yeah, it's, you know, that type of thing, it's like, I don't know, it's, it's not, to me, it's not that simple. It's gotta be, I don't know, and, and I don't know what, I don't think the answer is either we, we, uh, had some, I thought some pretty good ideas and a pretty good piece of legislation it was, it can, yeah, it didn't come out of committee.
And I just feel like we just keep dumping, jumping this stuff in DHHS's lap, and their, and their, you know, staff doesn't, they can't handle it.
They're overstaffed, I've heard.
I'm the only one in the state doing mine, you know?
I don't think they're overstaffed either, I'm just kidding.
You don't help it yet.
So, Joe, just to make sure I understood you correctly, you don't think that we should approve these at this point, just discuss them? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I read the resolution, my interpretation of the resolution is that we're accepting these for consideration.
Okay.
And, and that we'll have to have this on a future meeting's agenda.
Okay.
And I'd like to do that, I, I want to, I know in the past, um, the, the school committee has voted on each one of these and, and taken a position as a committee. And I guess if you want to do that, that's fine, but for me, I, I think would be as beneficial just to have a conversation. Joe, as your representative, should take essentially, because you may not all agree, and.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just like anything else that comes out of committee, there's a majority report and a minority report, both reports are important, both opinion, and I think it's Joe's job to listen to what everybody has to say to the physicians, and then go represent you to, to the delegate assembly. And, and not say, well, no, I can't support this because of witty, blah, 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 whatever, it's, you know, that's, I, I would rather see you give him guidance. In the same way that you gave us guidance about masking for open house last meeting.
So do we need to amend our motion?
I don't think so.
Is it okay? All right.
Well, I think you're already saying you're gonna send Joe forward to, to deal with these.
I just wanna make sure that wording was acceptable, okay.
And it's really interesting, if you look on, check on the second page, although Jen, I agree with you, but this is nice, but it's no teeth. But those are the types of things we already believe in, we're doing in the school system, okay? What's incredible is finding out some schools are doing these things.
Yeah, I agree.
It's, it's, um, I don't know, say, the, the whole accountability piece around attendance, and, because at the end of the day, it really comes down to, um, stop holding the kids accountable, it's holding the parents accountable, um, and it's just not, you just, it, I guess it's gonna happen. It is gonna happen.
I did, I, I noticed in, uh, number three, the two B, one C, uh, the part that they added was, uh, the types of curriculum to include in-person, remote, and regional collaborative learning opportunities, and I just, that remote piece, I didn't know how many, but how, where you felt about that.
Well, can I just, I, I don't have any problem with, I mean, I, we're part of the Bus to Main Educational Collaborative, the Bus to Main Educational Collaborative has put together a remote opportunity for, for, um, schools to consider, we're not doing it because it's very pricey, um, but are, it's still an option, it could potentially be an option for, for our parents, so I, I think the people looking at remote options, you know, they may be, who knows? The, the WMEC may stay with a remote academy type of thing for forever, who knows? What do you think, Megan?
I know that there's, we, we would still have the opportunity to partake in that oppor, in that, in that opportunity, because we were part of the foundational groundwork. I was part of that committee, uh, Mr. Hodgkins was also part of that committee as it was developed, and they determined all of the, um, requirements that would have to happen for it to run, so it really, fiscally, it doesn't make sense for us to option, to offer it as an option out to everybody, but if it was something that had to be more specific, it, it is something we have access to because we were, they're well-intentioned.
For instance, when we first started looking at it, and, and as, as part, and longtime part of that WMEC group, uh, I hope, I had envisioned, this is way off topic, but I had envisioned that they were going to have, uh, the remote academy do kind of like what VHS is for the high school, kind of an opt-in and, and a more reasonable, um, tuition, I guess, for lack of a better term for that. Uh, this is, this became very, very pricey, way more, I think it was gonna cost us more than if we'd run it ourselves, um, so, but, still, not about, I think, for people to look at.
Okay.
See, I interpreted that as what we're already doing with students who come in and you say, okay, you wanna look at courses at the community college level, or at the regular college level, or, you know, and, and to me, that's one of the successes that we're having that isn't extremely well-known to, to people that like to have, that know the fact that students can come in here, can actually skip a whole year, or they can get two years done, done separately, and so, I'm impressed with that, that's really what we wanna do.
Yeah, and the other thing kind of related to that is, um, uh, so, we, we already have sort of tentative approval that if we have, we won't have snow days, and we are saying those snow days will be remote educational days. So we still have remote, not in the sense we had, yeah, so I, I guess that the whole notion of, of them needing to be right here physically in front of us um, to have their education is not necessarily the, the case. It was really enjoyable, this was way off on a, on a tangent, but it really was good when I had the whole staff to sort of talk about, I know I'd heard from you, I heard from a couple others last year, where parents were saying that our, uh, work that was being sent on, home on remote days was not rigorous enough, and that was really frustrating for me to hear that, because I was like, it's not intended to be. Work that goes home on remote days or that that is not intended to be new learning. It's not supposed to be deepening your learning. It's supposed to be independent practice. It's supposed to be, as a teacher, you are, you are pretty clear about what you've taught them, what you expect them all to know. And on those remote days, it it's, you do independent practice, way back to back to Madelatunta, which most people didn't know was honorable. Um, but that's where it's supposed to be. And so you hear some parent, parents will say, well, my kid took fifteen minutes to do a whole day's worth of work. Awesome. That's great. Um, you know, and some kids took three hours to do that same amount of work. That's, that's the type of information.
In the classroom?
Man, but it's the information we need as a classroom teacher to, you send that evidence back, I thought you knew it, you showed me you know it, good. Now, now let's move on. So, anyway. Information for you, if people ask you about that issue.
Well, yes, so we we have not voted on that motion. So are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Okay.
Joe's opposed.
Vote passes unanimously.
Oh.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to elect Trevor Campbell as a one-year math, middle school math, science teacher for fiscal year twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded in discussion.
Excited? And I'm so grateful, um, to Mark for recommending, um, and and I called her references and I was waiting for callbacks and got a number of people because she also subbed locally. But then just the other day, and I didn't even tell Mark this, I I don't think I did, um, one of the people on the, um, application actually called me back. I was so excited. Um, but they had just said, everybody said, she's got a great work ethic, um, super smart, um, I wonder where she gets that.
Her mother.
Yeah. And and what I'm, I'm really excited about is she's got her, her degree is in psychology from U Mass Lowell. And I think when you're talking about middle school kids, you, that degree in psychology really comes in handy. So not only is she, you know, intelligent enough to do this math, science piece, but she's coming at it from that perspective that I really think is gonna help.
All right. And I'm really glad for you because I know that you've worked really hard to get this position.
Megan and I are currently teaching.
Medical science.
Yeah.
Well, it's so good she can get back across the border because she's in Canada right now. She'll be here Tuesday morning.
Yeah, she'll be here Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday. Oh, great, great. All right, all those in favor? Vote passes unanimously. Welcome, Trevor. Okay, any public comments? All right, uh, school committee comments. Janet?
Uh, just to thank you, and I don't know if this is the official name, so I apologize if it's not, to the Winthrop Garden Club, um, who came and worked on the football field and cleaned up a lot of the bushes and did a lot of work, um, down there. I know Joel was a little frustrated with, um, whoever we contracted with not getting the job done, but, um, they always do an amazing job, so really thank you. And, um, got to see my first field hockey game official in six hundred and sixty-nine days. So that was awesome to be there and see them all playing and all that. So that's it.
Timothy?
Uh, much. I mean, the, uh, great school open house last night. I went to, seemed cool really well. The kids enjoyed it. They were very loved, happy faces, parents, kids, so have one well.
You saw their faces?
Well, their eyes.
Their eyes.
Saw their eyes.
Yeah, I knew they were smiling. Kelly?
Uh, I I echoed him. The open house was great last night. It was really wonderful to shake the hand of Will's fourth grade teacher, since I didn't get to meet her in person last year, and then to meet his fifth grade teacher and have her lay eyes on him was, you know, before him starting was really, really great. Um, because he's a complicated kid. Um, I got to meet the mayor vice principal of the elementary school outside, so I'm very cool. I'm enjoying that. Um, and just to see how happy the energy level of school yesterday was, uh, out of this world. It really was. I'm wondering, well.
Joe?
Uh, sad note, uh, first, and some of you don't remember it, but at least for remembering him, when I came to Winthrop High School, uh, one of our history teachers also was the basketball coach for a number of years here with a very successful basketball coach, died a few, well, I guess about a couple of weeks ago, Charlie Holford was his name. And so people who were around in the, in the sixties and the seventies, they'll know him and, uh, and he had many outstanding teams while he was here, but my impression of him, especially as a young teacher, was that he was a real good mentor. He was committed to students and really enjoyed students and was always, well, he was tough on the basketball floor, I have no question about that, but he certainly was, uh, somebody that we felt comfortable with as a member of the faculty. And I mention him because, you know, unfortunately, we have too many people passing by and and going off into the higher atmosphere, so to speak, you know. But he's just somebody I really enjoyed. And some of you may have seen him in other schools because he was quite an active basketball coach, is what I call, really good around the stuff. Uh, the other thing was, I did have the opportunity this afternoon for just a few minutes to chat briefly with some members of our high school golf team who were coming to, I'm not sure, I don't think they had a game today, but they were practicing. And you talk about people who were happy. They were just happy. And that was good. And I kinda asked the question, you had a good day? No question about that, a good day. Glad to be here, so. And I've seen that in my neighborhood, talking to a couple of students, they're very glad to come back to school, so. Looking forward to that continuing and I think that will help everybody just because of their attitude. So, good job, everybody.
It's a big to you, Joe. Amelie?
Um, for me, today, the first day of school went very smoothly and what, from what I saw, I think, I mean, there are always bumps on the first day, but I think it went very well. And like I said, everyone is happy with the new protocols and, um, yeah, I had two of the new staff members today and I'm really excited to be in their classes because they seem like really great teachers so far from the first impression I got. Um, yeah, so like Mr. Krychowski said, there's a football game Friday. Um, uh, the boys soccer team had a game yesterday. They have two next week. The girls soccer team, the Winthrop Monmouth team, has their first regular season game on Friday. And field hockey had a game today. I'm not sure when their next one is, but.
They're Friday.
Okay, Friday. And, yeah, so I also wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Campbell and say how much I appreciate you involving the student leadership team in the decision-making for the protocols and everything, but, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I wanted to just say, uh, echo that it was really great to be at the field hockey game and and I will be at the soccer games too. And both of my daughters are loving their teams and their coaches very much. It's so fun to watch the kids together. Um, also, the Booster Club, I don't know if you guys are all aware, but they are really organizing this year. And they, they have a little snack cart for sales at the field hockey game tonight, which is kind of cool to raise funds. Um, and every team is going to have a parent liaison who people can go to and they're gonna organize things. So it's just kind of really nice to see what the boosters are doing. So I just wanted to give them a shout out. Agreed. And, uh, my daughter really enjoyed the freshman orientation. That was fun. It was fun having the the upperclassmen there to guide them and they did a scavenger hunt. They just kept going back and forth, back and forth. But they had a great time with that. So thank you, Mr. Campbell, for that. And that's all I have. So, uh, there is no executive session tonight, and so without objection, I can declare this meeting adjourned at seven forty.